To call the September twenty-sixth School Committee meeting to order. Welcome everybody tonight. The agenda is a little bit, a little bit out of order. We will always start with public input. After that, we'll have the second portion of the youth risk behavior survey. We'll have the superintendent's evaluation and then reports at the end. So before, so before we start, is there anyone that has public input for something that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. And I'd like to do consent agenda too.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Yes.
I'd like to pull the minutes for... Sorry, I didn't get my thing open yet. The minutes that are at the beginning of the packet, sorry. It's moved.
September twelfth.
For September twelfth? Yes, please.
There are reason for that?
Yes, and I would be, I have the wording. So in it, I really appreciate all the efforts to make the minutes succinct and I know that it's not a transcript. I felt it was important to note that when Mr. Tompkins was talking about the buildings, that he made a point of saying that our facilities has done a great job and that was in there. Thank you. He also said that all of our buildings are physically safe and sound and I thought that was something that people really are looking to hear and need to hear, that we needed to hear. So I, what I'd like to add to those minutes is a statement. Mr. Tompkins indicated that our facilities department has done a great job maintaining our school buildings, that's already in there, and adding all, and that all are physically safe and sound now. There is a good time, this is a good time for us to have planned the enrollment study because it can take three to five years to plan research and funding for a new building project. It's likely that we will need to be considering a new project in five to ten years, so having done the study now will help us be prepared. Am I speaking loud enough, loudly? So, I just wanted to suggest and I'm fine with that being a friendly amendment if that's comfortable.
Anybody object?
I guess the only question I have is the word "now." Like they were ever not physically safe?
No, that's not what was implied, so I'm fine with that.
So strike the word "now," but otherwise, I'm okay with that personally.
Thank you for that edit. And I have a copy.
And you can give that, Melinda.
Thank you. And the other in the same minutes, it talks about Dr. Darty coming back and I thought it was really important to note that he made a heartfelt thank you to the central staff who stepped up to run the district and commended their vital work running the district in his absence. And if I could find that piece of my packet, it got turned around. I have the wording for that.
If you get the gist of it, does anyone object to that?
So that's what I would like to add and then I'm comfortable with the minutes. I will, can I give it to you at the end when I fish it out of my pile? Thank you.
Okay, everyone, send your vote on the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor? Five zero.
I think we have to vote the minutes separate.
She pulled the minutes out, so we can vote them out separate.
I think it's a separate vote. Move to approve the minutes of September twelfth, two thousand nineteen as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Before we start, I did wanna, and this comes up later in the agenda, but I just did wanna take a moment to publicly thank Elaine Webb for her service, twelve-plus years of, you know, tireless work on behalf of the children, so I thank her for that and wish her well. If anyone else wanted to say anything. Okay, and that will, that process will come up later in the agenda, how to appoint somebody. Okay, Erica, we're ready for you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me back to continue our conversation on the youth risk behavior survey results. Tonight, I'm going to be focusing on the middle school results and we have a few people from our middle school buildings with us, including our SRO, Officer Matt Thatcher. He's newer to the role, but it's been amazing having him in that and he's been a resource for both middle schools. So as we talk about some of the safety stuff, I think it's also important to know we have that added resource this year that we haven't had in previous years. So, we did the introductory to what the survey is and so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on what the survey is because we did that last time, but I did want to include it in the packet in case people were viewing it for the first time. But again, this is a survey we do every two years. We work with an outside provider. This time, it was Jon Snow Inc., JSI, and the study was funded by Leahy Health for the Middle Sex League districts with the exception of Lexington, who chose not to Why we study risk behavior is really to focus on how we can understand what is happening with our young people and also to better predict and plan for, not just curriculum, but how we can build a stronger community, looking at social emotional learning and a lot of the other important themes in our district. Anytime we're talking about risk behaviors, I do think it's important to maintain focus also on the other side of the coin, which is those protective factors that all of us are trying to build with our young people, whether you're doing it as a parent, as a coach, as a teacher, as a para, as a librarian. That work with young people, focusing on building trusted relationships, having support, boundaries and expectations, all of that does matter and it does buffer young people against risk. We also know that the research backs up that theory, that the more we can scaffold young people, it doesn't protect them completely, but it does allow them a little bit more resiliency in the face of risk. So again, the survey overview, we focus on a series of risk behaviors ranging from substance use to bullying and violence and then the protective behaviors range from physical activity to sleep screen time and perceptions. The survey has proven to be reliable by the Centers for Disease Control. It also is a valid survey and it has been tested. There is internal reliability checks and the data is clean, so not every survey that is turned in actually is part of the final data pool. Seventy-seven surveys were removed from our data pool and that represents the final set of clean data. So Coolidge and Parker participated in the survey in similar way to what the high school did. Their wellness staff worked with administrators to set aside specific class block time. Parents were given the opportunity to opt their child out. Young people could also opt themselves out if they chose not to take the survey and then they were given the sufficient amount of time to do that. All of them did take the survey online this year. So just a quick review of the communities that are in the Middle Sex League, all except for Lexington, so Arlington, Belmont, Burlington, Melrose, ourselves, Stonem and Wakefield, Watertown, Wilmington, Winchester and Woburn. Little bit about the online administration of the survey, I went over what surveys were removed. So for the survey results, I'm going to share with you, for middle school, there's less comparison data. There is a national set of comparison data for middle school and state, but the data does lag well behind our current results, so I chose not to include them. But we will have that updated as that data becomes available. So the comparisons I'm sharing with you tonight are just against the Middle Sex League because that's what we have to be most reliable right now. So in terms of who took the survey, pretty good split between the three grades across both schools. The racial profile, which is a combined look at both middle and high schools representative of our district. When we start to think about some of the safety questions, we look at were young people using helmets when they were riding a bike, if they were riding a bike? Do they use a helmet when skateboarding or rollerblading? And were they wearing a seatbelt? And you can see that our rates are pretty comparable to the Middle Sex League, but again, we want to make sure that we're continually reminding young people about helmet use and about safety, particularly in a community such as Reading where we have such a high rate of car usage and a lot of traffic in a small area sometimes. So just reminding parents to remind their kiddos. Sometimes they do great with helmet use in elementary and then they get up to middle school and they kind of think they don't need them anymore, so we do have to keep reminding them about that. This question is a similar question to what was asked at the high school level. Did you ride in a car with someone that had been drinking alcohol? Fifteen percent of the middle school students said they had been in a car with someone who had drank alcohol prior to driving. The thing to keep in mind is all of these young people are not drivers themselves, so they're always getting a ride. So the person they could have been driving with could have been an older person in their family, could have been a parent, could have been an older sibling. We don't, we don't ask the specifics of who was driving them, but that rate is similar to the Middle Sex League. We also ask the same stress questions that we ask at the high school level and you can see it's very similar to what we saw at the high school level, that it's a lot of different factors that create stress for young people. But again, I want to point out that social pressures only represent four percent of what they describe as negative stress. And typically, when we think about young people, we often think about social pressure as being their number one stressor, so I think it's important to also think about these other pieces as very important. So school demands, because that's part of their life, that's what they're doing every day. Parent family demands, having a busy schedule, getting enough sleep. Thirteen percent worrying about the future. And that's probably a little bit different than maybe it was ten or fifteen years ago. That worrying about the future question has gotten more challenging as our society has gotten a little bit more directed in how, how we talk about future tracks for our young people. So something to think about, that it can cause worry for some young people. When it comes to school stress, this is pretty similar to the high school, but a lot of young people struggle with just the pressure of keeping up with schoolwork. It also can be harder transition for young people coming from elementary up into sixth grade, that it can be an adjustment for what the different demands are. The middle schools benefit from having the team-based model, which allows them to work with young people and have that advising kind of based approach, which allows them to talk through a lot of this stuff. But you can see it's a lot of the similar worries that the high schoolers have as well. The question around non-suicidal self-injury, this is a question that asks if young people are hurting themselves purposely but not intending to die, they're actually doing a more repetitive cutting or burning behavior. And that rate is currently sixteen percent. That is down slightly, one percent, but again, it's still a number that we want to continue to decrease. It is an area that staff are aware of and are trying to understand and make sure that we're identifying, referring young people when, when we're able to. Suicidal ideation, so we ask a series of questions to get at what the thinking and the planning is around this very serious question. So young people are asked if they've seriously considered attempting suicide, if they've made a plan about how they would attempt suicide and if they actually attempted. Unfortunately, nineteen percent described having serious considerations of suicide. That's tough. That's, that's a tough number of kids. It is close to the sixteen percent for the league rate, but it is up a little bit higher from our previous survey. It does correspond to national numbers and our national picture of what's happening with young people. Luckily, the rate of actual attempts is still about the same, but that tells us that more young people are thinking about it. Some of the research says that we have a higher number of young people who are experiencing depression and that can lend itself to higher rates of suicidality, sometimes, not always. So it's an area that we'll continue to look at and make sure that we're providing support and identification strategies. We also ask young people if they're already taking medicine or receiving treatment for a mental health or behavioral health problem. Twelve percent are already say they're engaged in some form of treatment and that's, that's promising to know that. We also want to continue to make that number higher. The national rate is, for high school ages, about twenty percent should be at least engaged in some form of treatment. At the middle school, the rate ranges between ten and fifteen percent, so we're kind of right in the middle of where we should be. These are a set of questions that ask about harassment, so, and they get into specific things of why they felt they were being harassed, so this is their perception of harassment. So twenty-two percent said that they had been harassed in some way. And of that twenty-two percent, these were the reasons they said they were harassed. Three percent for their racial or ethnic background, three percent for unwanted sexual comments or attention, four percent for someone thinking they were gay, lesbian or bisexual, seven percent about their group of friends that they hung out with, ten percent specific to physical characteristics, and then other reasons was ten percent. So you can see there's a wide range of things that are really troubling and for some young people, it can be multiple things. If you have a young person who is gay, who is with a group of friends that maybe isn't as popular, who's struggling with their physical characteristic, they can kind of end up with a lot of those pieces and feel a little bit isolated. So that's why when we think about disparities in data, we also look specifically at if young people identify as gay, lesbian, bisexual, are they reporting higher rates of harassment? So we look more specifically at what are the other disparities? And that came up at our last presentation. We'll be taking a deeper dive into the data to look at not just those, that group of young people, but also racial and ethnic diversity and does that impact the data? So it's another area we'll continue to explore in our data committee. This question talks about being uncomfortable about a social media posting. Twenty-eight percent reported they felt uncomfortable about something that was posted about them. The frequency of that, one percent said almost daily, one percent, one to two times a week, one percent, one to two times in the past month, thirteen percent, a few times in the past year, and twelve percent previously. But if you think about those, you know, three or four percent of young people who it's happening in the current month, that's something that could be weighing on them quite heavily every day. And that corresponds to what we're seeing with electronic bullying or cyberbullying. This rate has gone up significantly since the previous survey. It's actually doubled since the previous survey and that has a lot to do with access to smartphones. We have more young people who have devices than they did two years ago. So thirty-three percent reported experiencing some form of electronic bullying in the twelve months prior to the survey.
Yeah.
Yes. Go ahead.
Apologies to interrupt, but that is like three times the number of the high school, which was twelve percent.
Yep.
When you reported two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Do we have any attribution of that? Do we have any thought, is it just because they're new to electronics and they're not quite trained in it? Do we have anything else that we might attribute that to?
It's developmental, so usually overall bullying rates are always higher at the middle school level, whether it's at-school bullying or electronic bullying. So universally, those rates for that age group tend to be higher than high school maturity, sometimes first time with a device, but usually it's more about their inability to manage their relationships versus the high school, which are a tiny bit more mature. So, yeah, there is a definite shift and you see the rates start to decline as they get older. That's why education at the right age is very important, kind of catching them before they reach the age and then also continuing to support them as they get through middle school. And our middle schools are doing a great job with that piece. But when we look at electronic bullying, thirty-three percent, which is very concerning, then we flip to being bullied on school property. The rate is sixteen percent, which might seem concerning, but that rate is down from thirty-one percent since the last survey. So where that number went was to the electronic bullying. So the behavior just shifted and went in a different place. And it's important to understand that because that's where young people's lives are mainly is related to their connection to their devices and their life online. Being in a physical fight in the past twelve months prior to the survey, twenty-nine percent reported that, pretty close to the Middle Sex League rate. That's down one percent, so not hugely significant, but we'll take anything. Any decrease is a good thing. Carrying a weapon, young people were asked if they've carried a weapon such as a gun, knife or club. Fifteen percent reported that they did. That's pretty comparable with the Middle Sex League rate and that's pretty comparable to the previous surveys. The next set of questions get into dating violence. They ask a couple different questions to get at the data, so we ask young people if they're actually dating or not dating. And then of the dating group, did they experience a specific form of dating violence? So thirty-seven percent of middle schoolers said they were dating and that could mean lots of different things to them. How they determine that is up to them. Six percent say that they experienced some form of verbal abuse. Two percent say they were forced to do sexual things they did not want to. And four percent say they were hurt physically. So again, very important to have these conversations about relationships and what is acceptable from a boundary standpoint for our young people. And having those conversations early enough so that they have the opportunity to advocate for themselves and to come forward if they need to. I went over this at the last presentation, talking about as we work to create a healthier environment when it comes to risk, what we're trying to do is really turn the volume down or turn the heat down on as much risk as possible because it's already hard enough for young people to navigate this environment. So when it comes to substance abuse, one way that we can do that is to reduce access to substances and also not to encourage the use of substances by avoiding it or not talking about it. So when we get into vaping, nine percent reported that they've tried a vaping product. Four percent said that they currently use a vaping product. And that rate is higher than the last survey. The availability of vaping products went up significantly in the past two years, but we also made progress in raising the age to twenty-one. And then hopefully, many of you heard, the governor's ban for the next four months. We're very excited about that, but that doesn't mean vaping's going away because people will still continue to access illegal products and there will still be products in the marketplace. So we will continue our vigilance and continue our work on vaping prevention.
Erica, so the talk radio and all has been talking about this a lot in last couple days and the, you know, the theme was, you know, they're going to go back to cigarettes and/or, to your point, get stuff on the black market. I mean, how are we reacting to that?
Well, for right now, it helps definitely reduce access to have the ban in Massachusetts. It does make it a little bit harder for, especially younger people, for middle school especially. The harder it is to access the product, the less likely they already use it. So that is one plus. There is the concern about young people going to New Hampshire and going to, you know, nearby states, but we won't yet know how that's going to play out until we start to see how, what the impact is going to be. I do think young people are starting to understand the seriousness of the vaping illnesses. That's something that was not told to them by the companies that were selling them these products. You know, they were told these products are harmless, these are safe for you to use and now they're hearing about young people their age dying. So I think it does shift the conversation. I think it helps us as adults and parents have the conversation because it's in the news, but it won't resolve the problem. It's, it's really temporary to see what can we do to protect our young people. The chemicals that are currently in the vaping products are part of the problem and so the product that ends up being sold in Massachusetts could change over time and that could be a benefit, not just for young people, but to adults. So it'll be interesting to see what happens. There are some lawsuits already pending from some of the folks that are in the marketplace, so be interesting to see where it goes.
Thank you.
And we don't yet know what the enforcement will be for violating the vaping ban. We're gathering information to find out how that's going to play out, so we will share that once we have that information. But it is still prohibited in schools, it always has been. It's an area that we continue to work on.
Thank you.
When it comes to underage drinking, seventeen percent of our middle school teens reported trying alcohol and two percent say they currently use alcohol. I want to point out that for that area, it is up four percent since the last survey and that is concerning because that is a rate that had been declining over the past ten years. We also share that distinction of having a higher rate with Stonem. Across the Middle Sex League, Reading and Stonem were the two that had the higher rates and so that's an area that we want to pay attention to and we want to continue to do education. When it comes to access to alcohol for middle school students, about a third of middle school students say they access alcohol through some family member. Oftentimes, their family member doesn't know they've accessed it, so it's just important to continue to keep an eye on what people have in their homes and also to talk to older siblings about not providing alcohol to their younger siblings as well as not having people buy for young people. When it comes to substance misuse, three percent reported that they tried marijuana. That's about the same rate for Middle Sex League. Six percent say they've tried inhalants. Inhalants is another access issue because inhalants can be found in any home, their household products. So it is important to just keep an eye on that and make sure you have conversations around safety. And particularly garages are an area that folks often forget about because we don't go into them a lot if they're stacked with all of our things for over many, many years and we don't even know some of the chemicals we have in there. So I encourage people to try to clean out and at least know what you have so you would know if something's missing. Four percent reported taking prescription medications not prescribed to them to get high. That's an area that, again, we want to have, continue to have conversations with young people about never sharing medication, not taking it not prescribed, and also not mixing medications with other substances. with other substances. As we get into sexual behavior, this question is a newer question. As you know, sexting has become a more commonplace behavior. Fourteen percent reported sending or receiving sexual messages. That's concerning. And again, more young people having access to phones and social media mean the ability of pictures circulating is more significant than it was two, four, or six years ago. The rates for middle school sexual behavior are quite low, but again, we do need to do the education and the training and have young people understand the seriousness of understanding their boundaries and their safety. Five percent reported being sexually active. That's a little bit higher than the middle sex league rate. And then we also have a portion of those young people who clearly did not consent as they were under age ten when they were first having sex. So that's the area of abuse that we also need to talk about as a community and continue to do work on. And that's a tough topic for us to acknowledge as parents. It's a tough topic to acknowledge as a community, but we are not alone in that. It's a part of our society that we have to continue to place attention on. And luckily, our police department and our schools, they do have the training and support. But for many people who are dealing with this, it's often very hard for them to come Any questions? Do I keep moving? Yeah?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, I'm so disturbed, obviously, by some of these numbers. I'm so glad you're here, working on them, keeping us focused. And I'm hesitant to ask this, because the answer might be completely confidential, so I'm trying to phrase it broadly. So that two percent, does the staff feel like they have a sense that those kids are already on their radar? Or is this more than they thought were there? I don't know if I'm phrasing that well enough.
So I did have a conversation with our detectives unit about the number of child cases, child sexual abuse cases that they see. And we typically see one to three cases a year, so the rate is quite low. But it's a very under-reported set of circumstances. So that's the tricky thing, is our staff are trained to have conversations with young people. But typically, ten to fifteen years after the abuse is when someone might actually start to think about having a conversation or bringing it forward to law enforcement, or starting to talk about it in therapy. So it's not something that often, when it's happening, people are able to talk about, because they're often living with or are very close to the person that is unfortunately abusing them. But DCF is also part of that process, and if there's ever a suspicion of any type that is reported and followed through on, and Officer Vacher, if you have anything to add on, I mean, we have a whole protocol and procedure, sexually assault-trained investigators.
When they're old, when they're a little bit older, yeah.
Because again, if you're younger, you may not understand what it all means.
Do we have a translation of, and forgive me if I should be able to do this in my head, but two percent, like around how many kids is that?
About eight hundred and ninety or so took the survey.
Okay, thank you.
And not every young person answers every question, so it would be under a dozen, I would say.
Thank you.
But you can see for the middle sex league, the rate is one percent, so there's usually going to be at least some, unfortunately. We also do have in our region, the Middle Sex District Attorney's Office has a pediatric staying unit, which is a sexually assault-trained nurse examiner unit. And they have a lot of special folks that are trained to deal with these cases if they do come forward when they're young. So we have the resources available, and so if anyone ever has a concern, they can bring it forward to our detectives or to their school, and they will definitely be taken care of and walk through the process.
Thank you.
Screen time. So we've talked a lot about devices so far. About thirty-two percent say that they spent three or more hours a day for something that was not schoolwork, including iBox, I'm sorry, iBox, Xbox, iPad, being on the phone, social media, that kind of stuff. Missing breakfast. About six percent say they didn't eat breakfast in all seven days. That's actually decent compared to, if you remember, our high school numbers. So as they get older, they start skipping more breakfasts. So if we could keep the breakfast going, that would be amazing. When it comes to disordered eating, these are a set of questions that look at behaviors that sometimes lead to eating disorders. So one percent of our middle schoolers reported taking diet pills, powders, or liquids without a doctor's orders to lose weight. Two percent made themselves vomit or take laxatives, which is a bulimic-type behavior. And five percent did not eat for twenty-four hours or more, or that fasting behavior, that can be very dangerous. So again, it's also important, because kids are so busy, we've seen with the fasting behavior, it tends to be kids who are going, 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 and sometimes are forgetting to take their snack, to have a minute to do what they need to do, especially if they're physically active. So just keeping on reminding kids to be eating every couple of hours. Physical activity, as you can see, such a high number of our young people are engaged in physical activity, which is such a healthy, protective behavior, ninety-five percent, which is exactly what our middle sex league rate is. And that's really important, but also brings up the importance of eating breakfast and continuing to stay nourished. Concussions. So for concussions, we started asking about concussions last cycle, so in 2017 was the first time we asked. And in 2017, the rate was twelve percent, so it has gone up four percent. So that is an area to continue to keep an eye on. I know that we're starting, as a society, to understand concussions a little bit more. We have more research that tells us more about it. There's more protocols for school around safety and taking time out. But it is important to know that that rate has gone up slightly. So just an area to keep an eye on, and also for planning for school support if they have a higher number of kids who may be concussed and may need extra support. Trusted adults. We ask questions about, is there a teacher or other adult in your school that you feel like you can talk to about a problem? Fifty-eight percent said that they had that. Fourteen percent said they're not sure. And twenty percent said no. Some young people didn't answer the question, so it doesn't exactly add up. And one of the things with this particular question is, yep, some young people say they're not sure, because it depends on what the problem is, as to why they would bring it to school versus a parent versus maybe a coach. Outside of school, is there an adult or other adults you could talk to about things that are important to you? Eighty-seven percent say that they have that person. Eight percent not sure, and only five percent say no. So that's good to know, that most of our young people have that trusted adult. We want to continue to get that number as close to a hundred percent as we can. Sleep, such an important thing. So fifty-six percent, a little more than half, are getting eight or more hours, which is great. But that is a four percent decrease since the last survey that we had. And the research is showing that as young people get more devices, their rate of sleep goes down. Many young people sleep with their devices. So we remind parents, if they can, to try to take the devices out of the bedroom and also do what they can to remind them to get that eight hours, because it is so important for all kinds of protective behaviors. There's so much research that says sleep actually corresponds to less-risk behavior. Perception of parental disapproval. The set of questions from the next few slides focuses on how young people perceive what their parents think, their peers think, and also what they think about risk of harm related to certain substances. So for this slide, we asked young people, did they perceive their parents would disapprove of specific behaviors? One was, would their parents disapprove if they smoked tobacco? Ninety-eight percent say their parents would. Drink alcohol daily, ninety-six percent. Marijuana, ninety-seven percent. And use prescription drugs not prescribed to you, ninety-seven percent. Those are really strong numbers, which is amazing. And the research shows that the higher those numbers are, typically the lower your actual use numbers are for young people trying substances. So that's really important, that parents are making that clear to their young people. Perception of peer disapproval. The rates are slightly lower than the parental rates, but they're still pretty high and pretty strong. When that social norm in the peer group is that you don't use, that obviously is a protective And then perception of risk. Oh, sorry.
One question, sorry. I keep going back and forth between last time and this time.
That's okay.
And the marijuana one in particular is stark.
Yes.
Right? The high school one was forty-three percent. Peers didn't think it was a problem, and in middle school, it's eighty-nine percent.
Yes.
Is there, I asked the same question. Do we attribute that to something? Again, is it maturity? Is it, you know, the recent changing of the laws? Is it something else where they think they're okay now, because they're older? Do we have anything along those lines?
The research over the last five years has shown that between the decriminalization of marijuana to a bylaw in 2009, up until the most recent changes of recreational use for over twenty-one, has definitely affected social norms for kids that are over fourteen. So it absolutely has had an impact. Those rates vary across different states that have different laws. And like, for example, Colorado, when they did a study of their rates, the peer disapproval rate was around twenty percent. So unfortunately, that rate does decrease as your laws relax. Good question. Thank you. Okay, to move forward? Okay. So perception of risk or harm. So this is asking young people if they perceive a moderate or great risk of physical harm to these specific behaviors. So smoking one or more packs of cigarettes daily, ninety-three percent. Using e-cigarettes or vaping devices, eighty-four percent. What's interesting about this one is that young people now are starting to understand that they are getting the equivalent of a pack of cigarettes in one vape pod. And so I do think, over time, the vaping perception of risk and harm will go up, which will be good for us. But again, we have to get that information out to young people about what it means to vape and how much nicotine is actually in one of those pods, that you are actually ingesting a pack of cigarettes. Eighty-two percent said that they perceived drinking five or more drinks of alcohol one to two times a week to be a moderate or great risk of physical harm. The rate for marijuana is slightly lower, but still decent. Prescription drugs, ninety-three percent, which is important, that young people do understand that if those drugs aren't prescribed to them, that that can be unsafe. Looking at health education, the majority of young people report getting health education and alcohol and drug prevention and in bullying prevention. The rates for HIV/AIDS prevention are slightly lower. That's an area that's addressed less at the middle school level, but that's an area that we can be looking at for improvement to make sure that that's developmentally appropriate and young people are getting the minimum safety information that they need. So in terms of school support, these are areas that we talked about last time, and this is something that is much better left to our principals and our administrators about the amazing work that they're doing. But some areas that you know and are very familiar with is the social-emotional learning integration that's happening, the individual and team-based support, the health education work that's going on in the middle schools, our youth mental health first aid training for staff, our interface referral service for families. And I also have some cards here, if anyone would like them. And our Elliot Mobile Crisis Service for students, particularly those that might have suicidal ideation. That's a service that our school can call and work with parents to have someone come out and do an assessment. Next steps, we'll be working with our district data committee, and I believe that's something that our superintendent and assistant superintendent will be working with us on, to put together a great team to look deeper at the data. We will be doing parent presentations and community presentations, and then we'll be looking at bringing students together to talk about the information and also provide insight.
I just, I had a comment, and I didn't want to interrupt you before you talked about the bike, oh, I should have asked permission. Sorry. You talked about the bike helmets.
Yes.
And last night, at the RACASA annual meeting, Chris Heron's movie pointed out how powerful role modeling is in thinking about what we'd want our younger brother, nephew, grandson, whatever it is, to do. And I can't help but comment, because it's a thing for me, how many families I see out for bike rides with the kids wearing helmets and the parents not. And thinking about what you said, you said they don't think they need to wear one anymore because they get the message that people age out of wearing their helmets. And I think, I think there's a correlation between the role modeling of wearing those helmets and the idea that kids don't need to once they get to a certain age. And I can't help but make that point. Because I know people who have, I almost lost my own husband to a bike accident, and he was wearing his helmet. And he had broken ribs and a punctured lung, but his head was intact because the helmet hit. So it's just really important to think about that role modeling behavior, and I'd love to see our number of kids rise.
Absolutely.
Who say they wear helmets and be proud of it.
Yes. And I know that's something that our police department has been working on, is promoting helmet use. And over the summer, they did tons of work on promoting helmet use and stopping and acknowledging young people for wearing their helmets and giving them, you know, good citations for wearing their helmets. But maybe we need to up the ante for our adults and encourage that, because it is so important to keep us all safe. I mean, we all know the number of cars that are on our roads in Reading, so just from a safety standpoint.
Thank you.
Yes.
I really am interested that you're sharing this data with students, because I imagine, in some ways, if you are a student with an outlying experience or perception, to see the data and realize that the thing that I believe is safe or okay is very much outside the norm of my peers could be a powerful moment. So I'm just wondering, do you have any description of how students are going to be able to access and hear this data?
At the high school, we've used it in health classes, so they actually do projects with the data. And the health teachers work with me to bring in specific highlights. And we also work with the child development class on using some of the data, particularly around child development. And so that's very interesting, because they're kind of looking at the data to also look at, how do you approach prevention? How do you approach intervention? And then also reflecting on their own behaviors. I find it very interesting to talk with young people, because oftentimes, if they are in a peer group where everyone is using, they think everyone uses. And so when they see that seventy percent are not reporting that, I think it's helpful for them to know that that's out there. And also, for some young people that maybe don't know about it, it helps raise the awareness that, to not make comments lightly about those kind of things, because other people could be struggling, whether it's stuff in their family or other things like that. So I find it really exciting to work with students on it at the middle school level. It's something we could talk about. I know there's all kinds of work happening, but I'd love to find a way for us to figure out how we could do more work with students. Officer Vacher and I are going to be visiting the middle schools to work on vaping prevention projects, so maybe there's a way we can work in the data.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. So now we will have the superintendent's evaluation, and I'm going to, this is an annual process by state law, and I'm going to have Ms. Borowski, who compiled the data and ran point on it, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the start of this section of the packet, there's an evaluation called the Reading School. It's superintendent evaluation for the 2018-19 school year by the Reading School Committee, and it's dated June 23rd. So that's the one we're going to be discussing tonight. I want to start by addressing that date. This is a little bit unusual this year. The summative school committee evaluation is based on the individual evaluations done by the individual members of the school committee. We did that work last May, and then I compiled them in June. So we are looking at data and the perceptions of the school committee that go back easily five months, often based on data that goes back even further. So this is an unusual evaluation cycle. And just to clarify for anyone who doesn't know why that is, right at the time that we were ready to do the evaluation, Dr. Dority had to go on leave and was gone for the summer. So this has really been our first opportunity, practically speaking, to do the evaluation with Dr. Dority. So that explains the lag, but it's a bit atypical. So I wanted to start with that. My apologies ahead of time to everyone at this table who's already heard this, but on the off chance that there's anybody watching this who doesn't understand the process, I do feel compelled to kind of describe the process for superintendent evaluation, and then we'll dive into the actual presentation. So in the state of Massachusetts, the Department of Education provides school committees with this rubric that we use, so it's the standard across the state for the school committee as a body to evaluate the performance of the superintendent of schools. And it is a requirement that that evaluation is conducted in open sessions. So this is something that we do every year. The process is the chair, or the chair can appoint someone, in this case, the chair asked that I would do it, to take the individual evaluations, and there's some very clear, strict rules around this. We have to each conduct our, we have to complete our individual evaluation completely independently, and the only person who sees them is the person who's compiling. Typically, correspondence would be copied to the chair, not in this instance. The only person who sees it is the compiler, who then takes it and is tasked with creating one one evaluation from the disparate individual evaluations to create one evaluation that reflects the consensus of the committee. So my process, and I've shared this before, anytime that there was a rating, like, did not meet some progress, significant progress, I attached a numerical value to that. Zero would be the lowest, and then up to however the highest, four or five. I put in an Excel spreadsheet with each one of your names, and then for each category or goal, I plugged in the number that correlated to the ranking you gave, added them together, divided them by the number of evaluations, and that gave me the average school committee rating. If it was under point five, I rounded down. If it was above point five, I rounded up. So I really tried to keep the ratings as scientific and as passionate as possible. The harder part is the narrative, obviously. So my process with that, I took the very shortest evaluation, because it's the easiest place to start, and I take a legal pad, just a legal pad, and I make bulleted lists of sort of areas of commendation and areas for development for each of the sections. When I'm finished with that, I go to the second evaluation, and I do the same exact thing. If they make the same point, I put a check, which means now two people have made that comment. If they make a different point, it gets added to the list, and so on. What I'm left with is a big pile of notes with check marks, and I can see that three or more school committee members made this comment, so that makes it into the summative. As a matter of transparency, all of our individual evaluations are in this packet, they're posted to the website, so if anyone's curious, you can read our individual evaluations. But the summative, I tried to only include narrative that was reflective of a consensus point of view. In terms of the timing, I would like to say that there is one evaluation in here by Elaine Webb, who obviously was a member of this committee five months ago and no longer is, so she has an evaluation in here. I also, for anyone who's interested, we had one member of the committee, Mr. Parks, who had been elected in April, and we started this process in May, and made the determination to not complete an evaluation for Dr. Doherty. And I just wanted to say that that's a very typical decision. We've had several school committee members who've made that choice in the past, and M.A.S.A. guides that that is a perfectly acceptable decision to make. So I just wanted to clarify that. So the summative was based on five evaluations, not a full six. So I'm going to pause there. Is there any questions on process or law around this? All right. So we'll conduct, we'll dive right in to the evaluation for this year. Dr. Doherty has three sets of goals: professional practice goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals. And I should say to anyone, I'm going right through the document, so feel free to follow along on paper. It was the committee's opinion that Dr. Doherty met his professional practice goal and made significant progress towards the student learning and district improvement goals. On the performance standards, which are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture, the committee deemed that Dr. Doherty was proficient across the board. There are four categories: unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. Getting into the narrative a little bit, it's clear that Dr. Doherty is committed to the students of Reading and has a diligent work ethic. The committee commended the two significant awards that he received outside of Reading for his work as a superintendent last year. And as I mentioned, there was a sense of meeting or significant progress towards the goals. To specify the goals, I'm now on page three. There were three subsets of the student learning goal. One was about improving the safety of both physical and psychological safety of our schools. The second one was a reorganization of...
Central Office.
Yes, thank you, Central Office. I just had a moment, I was reading the wrong thing. I am reading the right thing. Thank you, Mr. Wise. Yes, a reorganization of Central Office that sort of redefined roles and sort of structural reorg. And then finally, working on a multi-year capital plan to improve school facilities were sort of the three big professional practice goals, and the committee felt that Dr. Doherty met all of those goals. The next section is the student learning goals. Overall, the committee felt that Dr. Doherty met these, but within the focus area, there was sort of a little bit of a difference between significant progress and having met. So when it came to closing the achievement gap and mathematics practice, the committee felt that significant progress had been made. When it came to literacy and social-emotional learning, the committee felt that that goal had been met. But overall, generally, the student learning goals had been met. So that's the first chunk of the evaluation, and it's on goals and how the committee deemed that Dr. Doherty got the district where we needed to be in the last year. The next set of the evaluation is on four performance standards. These have been identified by the states as the performance standards that a high-performing superintendent of school needs. So the first is instructional leadership, obviously, it should be instructional leadership. The school committee felt that Dr. Doherty was proficient across the board in the areas of curriculum, instruction, assessment, and evaluation. The one exemplary in this area was data-informed decision-making. Particular areas that came out in the narratives throughout the committee, with three or more committee members mentioning, was Dr. Doherty's leadership in social-emotional learning, an exemplary use of data to inform decisions, the implementation of the curriculum coordinator positions as a result of the override, the development and implementation of curriculum guides was mentioned by several committee members as a highlight this year, the variety of assessments used throughout the district, 2018 MCAS results, which led to strong accountability levels for all Reading public schools. Several committee members specifically mentioned the improvement at the Joshua Eaton School, the work done on the Bridge Program, the use of the workshop model at the elementary level, continued utilization of the advisory program, the successful NEASK process at the high school, and the significant and sustained increase in the percentage of high school students accessing high-level math classes. There have been several years of sustained increase in that area. Moving on to the next section. Standard number two is around the area of management and operations. Again, the school committee feel that Dr. Doherty's performance has been proficient, particularly in the areas of human resources management, scheduling, and management of information system, and law ethics and policies. The committee did feel that in terms of school environment and fiscal systems, that Dr. Doherty's performance was exemplary. So those were two highlights in this area. It's clear that there's a focus in our district on a respectful culture in all of our schools, the focus on addressing all areas of the safety of our students, their health, their emotional and social safety, as well as their fiscal safety, Dr. Doherty's level of integrity and consideration of laws, ethics, and policies. A very important thing that happened last year is the successful negotiation of all collective bargaining agreements. And they're all three-year agreements, I believe? So that really starts, sets a period of stability moving forward. So that was a very important accomplishment last year. That was mentioned by several committee members. Several committee members felt that Dr. Doherty's ability to hire and manage a strong central office leadership team and excellent building principles is one of his greatest strengths, and we recognize that. The reorganization of Central Office, I already mentioned that, was seen as a highlight. A couple, several, obviously more than three, three or more, several school committee members mentioned that they saw central office leadership personnel speaking more publicly and that they appreciated that. They liked to see more faces and more voices representing the district, so that was received positively by the committee. The strong collaborative working relationship with municipal counterparts across our town government, the successful capital funding from town meeting for necessary field updates and important school security initiatives, and exemplary budget development and management. Those were all seen as highlights in areas of management and operations last year. Standard number three is family and community engagement. The committee felt that Dr. Doherty's performance in this area was proficient. The committee specifically mentioned Dr. Doherty has a tendency to publicly express gratitude to his staff and ongoing efforts to publicize their work and their success. So that was received favorably. Ongoing communication via weekly newsletters and blogs, high level of availability to the public through both regular office hours and your willingness to meet one-on-one with parents. And obviously, we continued last year to struggle with the problem of hate for graffiti in our schools, and the comprehensiveness of the response that Dr. Doherty led was considered to be very strong by the committee. There was one area that several committee members would like to see focused on in the future, and that's working through engaging the public for more changes are made, anticipating that this is a change that may impact the public, and therefore, how do we get out ahead of it instead of reacting to feedback after a change has been made? So that was one area the committee felt that could be a focus area for next year. The last standard is professional culture. In the area of commitment to high standards, continuous learning, and shared vision, Dr. Doherty was viewed by the committee to be exemplary. And in the areas of cultural proficiency, communication, and managing conflict proficient for an overall rating of proficient. It is clear that Dr. Doherty is committed to a professional culture in the schools. He was marked proficient in this area, but several committee members would like to see conflict management as a focus for the upcoming year. So, thank you, Dr. Doherty. It was a strong evaluation. I'll certainly take any questions or concerns from Dr. Doherty or any of the members.
Did you have some?
I just have a comment. I don't have any questions. Since I've had a chance to read this for a while. I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the committee. I know how time-consuming this process is for all of you, and especially Ms. Borowski, who does double the work. So thank you very much. And all of you took it very seriously, which is important to me, because the purpose of the tool is to help me improve as a superintendent. I do want to say, though, that this evaluation is not just reflective of the work I do, it is reflective of the work of everyone sitting at this table. And I do want to mention that Sharon Stewart last year was part of that, and I know Jen is going to continue that great work as well, and in our building principals and directors and staff. You know, this is an evaluation of me, but however, there's a lot of people that contributed to the success of this school district. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any narrative they'd like to add to Jean's? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just say out loud? Upper case, thank you, Ms. Borowski. Because that was a Herculean task.
It really is an honor, and I know you put a lot of faith in me doing it, so thank you for placing it in me.
And I was also impressed by six evaluations, and each of us was so different in the way we approached it. And what we included, but we came up with similar evaluations in the end, but it really did manifest us all working, focusing, and bringing out our priorities and our personalities, I think, in how we wrote it. I apologize for all my narrative, but I'm a much more qualitative assessor. But thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chair?
I am.
Okay. Move to approve the superintendent's end-of-cycle summative evaluation report for the 2018-19 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Five-zero. Thank you.
Yes.
Jeffrey Carum Ridge Road, just had two quick comments to make. I thank you, all school committee members, for the work that you did in putting this together. As former treasurer of Yes for Reading, the Override Committee from a couple of years ago, one point I did want to emphasize was that Dr. Doherty did, in fact, spend the money as he had promised in the presentations leading up to. So that was the full, last year was the first full year using that override money that, you know, we told the voters we needed it, and, you know, it was spent according to that plan. The other point was on the NEASK reaccreditation at RMHS, which was noted. I also wanted to point out that Dr. Doherty and administration had pushed NEASK to optimize their accreditation process, and there was some, you know, that we sort of told NEASK we weren't, we didn't like the process before, and we were a little slow, and there was some pushback from the community, hey, we're going to not be accredited. And ultimately, things were resolved. We got a much better evaluation process that was more helpful for the high school in terms of less demands on their time and more positive work to go. And I think that was something that, you know, Dr. Doherty helped push the district and NEASK in that direction.
Thank you for the opposite.
Can I?
Yes.
Just really quickly, I would feel remiss if I didn't say thank you to Dr. Doherty for the blood, sweat, and tears that he's invested at a very hard time in our world and in our schools of taking us from a place that was very difficult, working so hard on the override, getting the money, as Dr. Carum said, spending it in the right way, being at the states so we could influence processes and what's expected of us. And I just wanted to say thank you and reiterate how much I hate this public process, but thank you.
Thank you. So we already voted on the motion.
Yes. Got some collaborative boards.
Yes. Dr. Doherty, do you want to just give some color on that?
Sure. As you know, we belong to two special education collaboratives, the North Shore Education Consortium and the SEEM Collaborative. Both are guided by state law on special education collaboratives. And a few years ago, when the law changed, the school committees in all of the communities that are represented had to vote on a set of articles of agreement, which specify a whole set of rules and regulations that we have to follow. And one of those is that annually, the school committee has to reappoint the superintendent who is representing this district on those two collaboratives. So this is an annual appointment that happens. You did something similar the last few years.
Question?
Yes.
Move to appoint Superintendent John F. Doherty as the Reading Public Schools representative to the Board of Directors of the North Shore Educational Consortium for the 2019-2020 school year.
I'll second it. I just wanted to point out behind you was a hand.
Yeah, no, after the, yeah.
After the motions? Okay, you want to read the second one then, or?
No, no, this one. Go ahead.
So this is my first time doing this, so I'll ask the question. Since, I believe both of these are special education-related consortiums, right?
They also have professional development pieces to them as well.
Okay. And I think in your other announcements, we've been talking about how to manage work-life and things like that. So in conscious effort of that and in conscious effort of having a new director of student services, is it mandatory that it's the superintendent, or would it be also potentially possible to be the director of student services?
No. It has to be the superintendent, depending on the article that's written, it has to be the superintendent or a school committee member. Both of these boards are superintendent boards. The directors actually also have their own meetings that they attend with each collaborative.
As do the assistants.
As do the assistants and other job-alikes too, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those, yes, Dr. Carum.
Jeffrey Carum again. So if we don't appoint you, then we would have no representation.
You would not have representation.
Okay.
Or we could appoint a school committee member.
You said this one, it says superintendent by law.
These are superintendent-only. There are some that are mixed.
All those in favor of the motion? Five-zero.
I have a second motion. Move to appoint Superintendent John F. Doherty as the Reading Public Schools representative to the Board of Directors of the SEEM Collaborative for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Second, and Mr. Wise. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
Yes.
Okay. I'll put the motion on the table. Move to approve the school committee informational brochure.
Is there a second? Second. So this was brought forward by Dr. Doxter and recently had some edits by Ms. Borowski and I think Dr. Doherty as well. So I don't know if everyone's had a time, had an opportunity to look at it, but I'll open up the floor for any discussion. Yes?
I have one. After this packet was published, an eagle-eyed staff member brought to our attention that there is an error that I'd like to propose as a friendly amendment. Under school committee meetings, third paragraph down, it says, "The agenda is planned by the school committee chair and vice chair along with the superintendent and his team." The agenda is available forty-eight hours ahead online at, and it says, "The Reading Public Schools" website. It's actually available on the town website. So I would just propose that we replace the www writting.k12.m a.us with at the Reading Town Hall website. website.
So, it's not, it's not on both?
No, the agenda has to be posted legally on the town website. We put the packets on.
The pack, that's the one.
Yeah, but this is the agenda.
Any other comments? Yes.
As is usual, I continue editing my own work, and I really was very grateful for the feedback that I got on this. So, I wanted to, it's partially a question. Under the school committee contact information, we invite letters, and I was thinking that it would be helpful for people to know that when they send a letter to the whole school committee, that it's likely, not definitely, but likely to become a public record and so, and published in the school committee packets. So, I was wondering about adding a line to that saying, "Notices to whole committee, whole committee might, are likely to be considered public record." I don't like when people are surprised.
Technically, they're public record anyway when they go into our email box, right? So, it's whether it's a publicly posted public record or it's a public record. But technically, once they go into our email box, it's a public record.
Okay. So, my question was, though, that not everyone would be, it depends what the content is because we wouldn't make public a comment about a staff member or someone under contract, the staff. So, I wasn't sure on that technicality. But I wanted people to be aware that their, what they send to all of us is a public record. So, maybe to Mr. Wise's point, notices to the whole committee are considered public record, period.
Notices to any one of us. If they send an email to any one of our public official emails, whether it's the whole committee or not, it's public record.
That's true. I was just looking for a way to warn them that it might, because to us individually, it's not going into the packet.
I kind of, I mean, sorry, Chuck, I guess we're reopening. I kind of feel like it's a little bit, I mean, I don't know if the right word is overkill, but it is, they're emailing a public official, right? I mean, by definition, when they email us, they're emailing a public official, so in that regard, it's a public record. If you want to say, may be posted in the packet, or will be posted in the packet once we respond, as we discussed on 7/11, and we will provide feedback, and, you know, but then you're coming into verbiage, and how much space do you have, right? So, I think it's, I mean, in the essence of what this is, it's what our role is, what's what our job is, it's things like that. I kind of think it's out of scope. That's my view, but I'm open to a shorter version if there's a way to say it.
Ms. Borowski.
I tend to agree with Mr. Wise on this because I think if you say, "These are public records," they'll likely be in the packet. My immediate question was both, who decides whether they're in the packet, and then describing how that decision is made and the law around it is way more than we can get into in a brochure. So, I do think it could open some questions that we don't have the space to answer here. So, I tend to agree. I don't think it's necessary. Maybe the solution is a simple sentence at the end of, "Use the above email to reach all school committee members and the superintendent of schools," period. Emails to the school committee are public records, period. That is a fact, and that should be enough to make you realize this email is public.
I love that. Part of what I wanted to be really careful about is this is meant to invite, the brochure is meant to invite people to approach us, and I didn't want to deter that.
Right, right, right.
But I also didn't want them to be blindsided. So, I love that verbiage. Ms. Borowski, English teacher. Did you get that, Mrs. Engels?
Well, we haven't voted on it.
Oh, if, okay. Sorry. Right. So, do we vote one at a time on?
Hold on, as amended.
Okay. So, do all the amendments? Okay.
Yes, Dr. Korm.
Jeffrey Korm again. So, I just noticed that there's, you know, the five members listed here. Are you going to then have to revote when you add the next member back in? Does it have to be revoted, or can you somehow make account for that, you know, when the appointment happens? And also, on the second page, there's one instance of superintendent that is not capitalized, and all of the rest of them are, so.
Where is that?
Let's see. On the second page, middle column, the third paragraph, "The school committee evaluates only the superintendent." The superintendent.
Even English teachers make mistakes.
Yes.
So, here's my thought on that, and I'll certainly, if anyone has a different opinion. I think that no substantive change should be made to this without a vote of the school committee. I think changing a phone number, changing an email address, removing former school committee members and putting new ones in, I think falls under housekeeping. I don't think we need to vote. That is my sense.
I agree. Yes.
And to that point, we talk about there being six school committee members, and this brochure lists five for an obvious reason because we're missing, we are missing Mrs. Webb.
We will hold the brochure print until there's a full complement of a committee.
That's great. And then, can I add one other thing? I really appreciated the picture of the students that was put on the second page. In my, I really did. In my envisioning of the brochure and its purpose to invite people to know us and know what we do, why we're here, I was envisioning a picture of the school committee there so that people, we would be recognizable, we're real people, we're volunteers. And so, I think that putting our picture there now before we have our sixth member is premature, but if we are going to have our sixth member in October, if there'd be a way to take that picture, maybe then, or maybe have a regular time each year when we take that picture to update the brochure. In my mind, my vision for this, and I'm curious to know other people's vision, is that this will be a work that will be updated. So, I picture us printing it in the schools in color and printing more when we need them, not going and spending money to print millions of these, but to have them for when we're going to be at the town fair, when we're going to be at the Friends and Family Day or other places so that we have these available, and they're available in the school's central office or wherever, but so that we don't overprint, and then we can update with the new school committee members' names.
So, yes, Mr. Park.
I respect that, but I think we are all here for the students, so I actually enjoy seeing the students there. That's, you know, our position is, we're here for the students and the betterment of the students, so it's nice to see the students in this, in my opinion.
I can't argue with that. And I don't know whether, when this brochure was first made, the picture of the bell at the high school was added because that was a really big thing when I first was working on this. Sorry?
In 2016, yeah.
Yeah. And so, that's another place if that, if we want pictures of students too, there's an option there. So, or that could be where the school committee picture goes on the cover, and then the students stay, because I love the students being a part of it as well.
So, I hate having my photo taken. Start with that. But seriously, seriously, I think on the front, I actually, my inclination is, I like the kind of iconic, the bell in front of the high school. It's sort of the one school that all the students go to. So, I kind of like the iconic one of our buildings, and I think I feel, I think I agree with Mr. Parks that having students represented is nice. I don't have very strong feelings either way, but I'm happy with it the way it is, and if that's easier, I guess I would lean to the path of least resistance.
Yes.
Couple other points or notes, and this may be more substantive that might cause us to go back to the drawing board a little bit. But I notice in here, there's nothing about the school committee establishing or collaborating to create goals for the superintendent. It says, "We review the district improvement plan," but there's nothing that says, "We establish or create goals and collaborate with superintendent on goals in the goal-setting process." There's nothing in here that says, "We're responsible for policy." It says, "The superintendent implements our policy," but not that we're responsible for creating, reviewing, keeping up to date, policy, which is one of our major tenets and what we're supposed to be doing. And there's nothing in here that says, "We approve the budget," right? And that's a technical word there, I suppose. There is stuff about working with and reviewing and within certain things, legal mandates and whatnot. It says, "Create," the superintendent, chief financial officer, "create it," but it doesn't say that we actually approve it, and that is our job. So, those three core tenets of what we do aren't technically listed in this thing and would require pretty significant adjustments to get them in here. And then, some other minor things in alignment with Dr. Korm's point. School committee is capitalized in most places, but not in some places. And committee is capitalized in some places, but not in some places as well. So, from a consistency perspective, we might want to look at that. In particular, it's the second paragraph of the middle section on the second page was jumping out at me, but there's other places I'm sure we could look at. So, those are just substantive, goals, policy, budget are substantive, and they're just, they're not there.
And that's definitely more than we can do tonight.
Yeah.
Actually, so, under school committee's job, it says, "Provide leadership and oversight, creating and updating school policies and guidelines that benefit the health, education, and welfare of students as well as the operations of schools."
That's there, good.
"Work with the superintendent, chief financial officer, and town to create the best school budget possible within the constraints of legal mandates, available funds, and educational priorities."
So, "create" is there, but the technicality of what we do is "approve," and maybe we don't think that's important.
So, we could just add that word. I'm not saying.
Create and approve. We can do that, right?
Create and approve is.
Create and approve.
Approve.
Approve the school committee budget.
Yeah, and it's technically our budget too, right?
Okay.
I'm sorry I missed that fourth paragraph when I was going through this, so thank you for that, Linda. But goals, I think, it's, goals is probably somewhere hidden in that second paragraph with regards to hire, evaluate, supervise, and review, but it needs to be, it's not just the district improvement plan we're reviewing. We're helping to establish, set, monitor, and ultimately, we evaluate against the goals.
The superintendent is appointed and evaluated by the school committee.
Against what, right?
I mean, you can add.
Yeah, but the technicality by law is actually setting goals. That is what we do. It says our job. That is our job. That's one of our jobs. Maybe I'm, you know, me, I'm sometimes a little bit pedantic, but.
No, I think they're great suggestions. Can I?
You've been keeping.
I got two out of the three. You said, "Hire, evaluate, supervise the superintendent as well as review the district improvement plan," and then you said, "Set and monitor."
And set, and set goals.
Set district goals.
I didn't get it. The answer is, Chuck.
I don't know that I had technical language for it, Jean. Actually, as I was going through it, it was more brainstorming. Our last meeting, when we were doing our protocol, there's more in there about collaborating to create the goals and things like that. I think maybe we can go back and look at that language and steal it for lack of a better way, see how we can fit it in here, because I think we went through a very good process of coming to that language. There, it was a collaborative process. It is a collaborative process of creating goals. It's not just that we want something, he has to agree, it's something that he can achieve, all that kind of fun stuff, the word SMART and all that, the acronym SMART coming in, somehow, some way, if we can weave that in there.
I'm just looking at this and wondering if it would suffice to say, there are two places where that collaborating over goals might fit. So, in the second paragraph, "Hire, evaluate, and supervise the superintendent as well as review district improvement plans and collaborate to set goals." That might be one place. I don't know if we're going to get word for word from our protocol because that's a larger document, and it needs to fit.
There's one particular sentence in the protocol about the goal process. I mean.
Does it say SMART? I can't.
And it does say SMART. It does say collaborate. So, I mean, I could probably pull it up. In fact, I know I can, so hold on a second.
The second place that I was thinking.
As well as review the district improvement plan and collaborate in the establishment of SMART goals.
That would work.
We're not going to vote on this tonight. I want to see the.
I think, so I wonder, given that, then, I, or Linda, or anyone can take these, can take these suggestions. I did take notes on what needs to happen, so I'm happy to take them and make those. I made the note about looking to the protocol for the one sentence. These are a lot of amendments that I.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd need to see it.
I'd like to look at it again.
Absolutely.
I'm just going to need some formatting editing to get it in there. So, just so you know, the words from the protocol is clearly defining aspirational and SMART goals for the district in collaboration with the superintendent.
So, that one sentence, okay.
Which is a very long sentence, having worked with this.
Linda, did you do this, or?
It was from 2006, or the original one.
So, where is the electronic version of this?
I have an electronic version of it.
I have the, I have the latest version.
Okay.
I have the latest edited version, which I can send to whoever is.
So, I have a request. This has been in the making since 2014, so I think that it would be really good if we treated it as we do our policies, where we have a first read, that's what this would be, and then a second read where we might, we can see the redline version of it so that then we can feel confident voting on it so that it doesn't get pushed out another.
No, it's not going to get pushed out. What I was going to say is, we have the electronic version. If we, if you have any, anybody has any changes or anything that, about that, just send it to me, and I'll make sure that that gets incorporated into the, hopefully, redline version that we'd be able to vote on at our next meeting.
One point of order on that is that, maybe not the right words, but this being a very brochery thing, if you redline it, there's no way it's going to look like a brochure.
Right. I was just.
Not redline it, just different colored text.
You might need something else to, technicalities again, but yeah.
I foresee a challenge also if we all send you different things. I'm not, it's going to be very difficult to decide how to incorporate the different.
That's what we get paid for, right?
Yeah, the big bucks.
May I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
While I appreciate that this is here at the meeting and that we are talking about it, is it technical enough and open enough that it requires? It doesn't, I mean, technically, it doesn't require a vote, really. It's not a policy issue, right? It, I mean, it's nice that we're discussing it, but I don't even think it would fall under open meeting law necessarily. It's not business before the school meeting, the school committee, technically. It's not, we're not voting on anything from a policy or budget or anything else along those lines. We're not looking at anything from a, you know, it's not, doesn't really substantively change our mode of operation. Is it necessary? I know it's appreciative from a public perspective, but is it necessary?
It falls under the same situation as the protocols. We don't have to vote on those either. It was just something we did to just memorialize it officially, so, no, we don't have to vote on it, but I don't even, I mean.
The reason.
I think we got a request to vote on it, but.
The reason why I was asking that, just before you jump in apologies, is because we could probably establish just a shared document in this case without violating open meeting law and editing it. I don't know. I mean, and maybe Colby can answer that question relatively quickly? No?
Anytime you collaborate outside of the meeting.
Right.
I'd like to suggest that it's, we are mandated, if someone is going to. I, I'd like to suggest that it's, we are mandated, if someone is going to speak for us, to vote on what they're going to say, and this document speaks for us. So, I feel as though, yes, for the perception, we should vote on it, but more so that we're putting this out there as something that represents us. And so, I feel like we should all vote on it, so that we are, we all own it.
And nobody was suggesting, I think, that we wouldn't vote on it. I think it was a point, asking clarification-
Oh, okay.
-of whether we should, whether we have to vote on it.
Well, really, it was more of, is there a better way for us to edit it without worrying about, you know, back and forth and then coming again, and, you know, is there a more productive way we can do it?
I have a productive way, we give it to the English teacher.
She got a D. tonight.
Quick. So, I did make a lot of notes about all of that feedback, so I do feel like I have a good sense of this, so I guess my kind of question to the committee is, do you think you're going to go home, think about this, and have a bunch more? Or do you feel like this was kind of the robust discussion? And if I capture all of this, it's probably going to be okay?
I think, if you capture it, I'm good.
So, maybe that's easiest. I'll go mock it up, or Lynda can, or we'll figure out who does it, and then we'll put it in the next packet for a vote.
And I'm sorry I volunteered you.
Okay.
Thank you.
My appointment process.
Do you want the last motion on the vacancy?
Yeah, so, as I mentioned at the outset regarding Ms. Webb's resignation, we, the, it's been out there, the resignation went to the town clerk, so the Board of Selectmen has seen it, but by, they're aware of it, but I'm still required by law to notify them of the vacancy and recommend a, a process for appointing someone. So, we're still trying to nail down a date, and we were, I was trying to tie it to one of our meetings, but it doesn't look like that's going to work. That's the 17th.
The 17th won't work for the, for some members of the select board.
But there, there is a financial forum on the 16th, so we're going to go back.
Could do an earlier, yeah, we're going to look, we're going to look to see if that's feasible.
See if that's feasible with the Board of Selectmen to do it that night before the financial forum. So, that's, yes.
That's going to be a long night, the financial forum. They might be starting it at six. They mentioned in the last Finance Committee meeting, they have a lot to cover in that night, and it could very well be a very long night. Now, the Finance Committee may be seeing something they need to see before that at six, and then it becomes the open portion at seven or something, and maybe us and the Select Board could do something at the six, at six, but that could be tricky to navigate.
Well, we can, we'll get the town manager's read on that.
Yeah.
And if he, he'll certainly say everything, because it's too crowded to do that. And then we just pick another night.
No, we'd have to go, we'd have to go later at this point, because it's at least a 14-day posting-
Yeah.
-that has to occur.
Oh, so we're not in time to do the 16th?
No, no, you are right now.
We are, but-
But you, you can't, if it's not the 16th, you'd have to push it out.
Can't be before the 16th.
Okay. I have a, I have in my calendar that the financial forum starts at 7:30. Is that not correct?
That's the typical time the Finance Committee meets.
Oh, that's why. So, but now it's at seven?
Well, it, they were debating how early it was going to be at the end of the last meeting, and it could be as early as six. They may have to, they were trying to see if they could fit something in another meeting before that, so they didn't have to have it so long, but they're trying to figure it out. I don't know that, I haven't seen it finalized, so.
So I was going to look back to the town manager tomorrow with this possibility, and then he can give us guidance if that works.
Yeah, he, he'll tell us whether it doesn't make sense to do it that night, and, you know, more to come on that. We do have to, we have, have a motion that you have to allow me to, to notify the Board of Selectmen.
I'll do that. I move to authorize the Chair to notify the Sledge Board Chair of the school committee vacancy and ask that the position be posted.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Five, zero. I guess we're two reports.
Nothing for me.
Dr. Doc, sir?
Rakasa held a fabulous annual meeting yesterday, and at that meeting, we were introduced to Sammy Salkin, who is the new outreach coordinator. She came before she was supposed to even start and was, she just glowed. I really think she's going to be a wonderful asset. She's very excited about getting into the schools and working with the students and carrying the message that we just saw is so important. It was a real mix of people. I'm not sure how many ended up coming, but 150 easily, that's a guess. 180, thank you. People at the meeting and Chris Heron's film refocused us like we've been see, we've been doing in Reading on the first day. So no longer just focusing on, not that we've been focusing on only the response, but emphasizing that we need to think about how these things start. When do kids start relying on drugs? And what's going on in their lives? And he did a really good job, I think, of emphasizing that both those kids that don't do it and those kids that do do it need our support in interventions. And I mentioned before about the role modeling, how important it is to collaborate with kids so that they understand the impact of their actions on those younger than them. And we're in the process at, of Rakasa, of recruiting more people and figuring out who are going to play the roles there. And we talked about the interface again, and it was great to have the SROs, the School Resource Officers there, who suggested, picked questions that were discussed, and there was a lot of back and forth from people of different ages in, in considering the questions that were raised about addiction, about how it starts, about how to intervene if you're a parent and you learn about somebody else's child, and how you work with your relationships with your own children if you need to alert someone. And I really recommend, I'm, I'm thrilled that this is going to be offered to the high school, who unfortunately had the conflict, and there's consideration of doing it with the middle schools, that's being worked on. But I highly recommend that the high school parents and their kids attend the program that will be held. Do we have a date for that?
March 18th.
March 18th, great. And that will, will, may I address this question? I didn't get the answer to it. Will middle school families be welcome to attend that as well?
So, for the March 18th, we'll be hosting a screening for parents, and they're welcome to bring their children if they wish. We recommend 12 and older, so middle school parents would be more than welcome, and we'll be working with the high school to show the film to students during the day, so that more students can have access to the film. In working with the middle schools, we plan to just start with sharing the film with staff and allow them to reflect on the film, because there's some very serious themes in the film. We don't yet have plans to show the film to middle school students, but that may be something that the, the school administrators discuss. But for now, it'll be used as a tool to start more conversation.
Thank you very much. It was a very powerful tool, and there were actually athletic teams there who came together to watch, which was, I think, very powerful as well. So, I think that's, that's all for now.
Just a quick one. I wanted to remind the committee that the next CPAC meeting is Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM, and I think we're having elections.
Mr. Wise. Okay, so, Select Board on Tuesday, Anne mentioned, Anne Landry mentioned that HTRAC is, I forget which HTRAC it is now, so, one of the HTRACs, whichever Elaine was on, is now-
Anhok.
Anhok, is now-
She's on both.
She's on both. Well, this one's down to four members, and it's a body of seven, so they can't, they have a very hard time getting quorum. So there was a conversation about what they could do. It's, it's based on their policy, so it's not a bylaw issue, so they might be adjusting the, the number in that committee, down to five or something like that, and/or finding other people to appoint into that position. So, if anybody was interested, either from this board or anywhere else, to be a member of that committee, you might want to reach out into the Select Board or Town Manager, whoever else is, is responsible in that space.
Can I, can I just say, that's the Human Relations Advisory Committee? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Nope, that, I, thank you.
That's not the Anhok, that's the-
It's the regular HTRAC, Human Relations Advisory Committee. Okay, the other thing, there are two other things that came out of that. There was, they were there for a long time, I think 11:30 again, but I, before I left, the arts, there's going to be an Arts Festival in Town Common on October 5th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, weather permitting. So, artsreading.org is the organization's putting it on, and it's a lot of organizations around town that are involved in the arts, including Jam for Jakes and, or Jam for Jake and things like that. So, if anybody's interested, they said the rain dates the October 6th, so this is their second year trying to do it. Last year, they got rained out halfway through, but they're looking to build on it. I point that out because the other thing that was interesting about the Select Board meeting was the presentation around New Crossing Road redevelopment, which they've, they then started calling Eastern Gateway, and then at the end, they started calling it The Yard. But if anybody has a chance to get access to the presentation for that, it was actually, it was really quite fascinating. And it centered on making RMLD itself, the building, the core building, an arts center, and with, you know, grass in front of it, grass behind it, you know, streets back behind it as well, leading into it, and a few other things. It was really just quite interesting how little things like grass and trees can change everything.
RMLD or DPW?
RMLD. RMLD, yeah.
They're not, they're on Ash Street, huh?
Yes, yes. So this was Ash Street going, there was a triangle of Ash Street going back towards DPW on this side of the tracks, right? That they were looking at as part of the redevelopment and putting a connection through in a street, and they showed all the different visualizations of how the existing buildings that were there could, could continue to be used. So it wasn't a bulldoze and redevelop, like, big plan. It was a incremental change, make this into a livable space, you know, community gathering space, which I thought was really fascinating. So that was that. And then today, as a parent at Parker, I was able to participate in watching the angst video, which some of our community might be at, which is why we have only three people here today. But that, I think, was quite interesting. You know, that was, it's focused on anxiety in youth and teens, and they were showing it to the entire middle school, and it started with a lot of the, you know, what does that feel like, and how do I do it? And then it turned into, how do I cope? And how do I get my, get myself out of my head? So, you know, that was kind of, hit a little close to home, but it was nice to see and understand and whatnot. So, I, it's good to see the action of the social-emotional learning in progress, so.
Thank you. So, we'll start down the, again?
So, I have been very much enjoying getting out, getting into the buildings, meeting with families and community members, and continuing to get to know Reading. And as part of that, we actually got some good news from the state. As part of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, back in 2016, they tried to put more teeth into making sure that states are really looking at disproportionality in terms of students with disabilities. So they checked to make sure that we are not over-identifying students in terms of special ed identification, placement, or discipline, and by race and ethnicity. And so the state really needed to change how they were looking at the data and collecting it and reporting back to communities around, is there a disproportionate number of students that are either being identified or disciplined based on their race and ethnicity within special education? And we were notified from the state that there is no disproportionality in Reading, which really shows that the special education process and what teams are doing to ensure that students who need support are getting it is in line with the state data, which is wonderful news for Reading.
Thank you.
Great. I have one quick update. We will be giving more information at the financial forum, but we did want to let, let committee members know that the town has closed its books for the prior fiscal year. We're currently undergoing the annual audit. We're completing our end-of-year report, which we will be filing next week with the Department of Education. But we did want to let the committee members know that we did close out the year with a surplus of just over $300,000, and that's in line with what we had been reporting throughout the year. The last month that we did, on May 30th, was very close to that. Some of the change comes in where we had anticipated some additional professional development or work being done by teachers, and some of the numbers came in slightly less than what we had anticipated. It is about a 0.6% of the total budget, so it is still a relatively small number. And just as a reminder, that's actually spread across all five of the cost centers, so when you're looking at the number of individual lines and cost centers that we have. The other piece that we were able to do, working very closely with Sharon Stewart, is we were able to prepay approximately $475,000 of tuition, which to us was very helpful, especially knowing that we were going into this year with a little bit of uncertainty around that number. No guarantees that we can continue to prepay that number, but we did want to take advantage of that. We also were able to purchase a lot of the technology. We replaced a lot of SMART boards, a lot of computers. So we did stay in tune with everything we had said as part of the override. And again, a lot of this surplus was related to some of the open positions and timing of when we hired individuals throughout the year. So there'll be more to come in the financial forum, but we did want to give the committee information ahead of that.
Great, thank you.
And the only other item we did want to let folks know, because I know we have received questions, is we, I want to change myself, we have hired a new school nutrition director. We're very excited. Danielle Collins will become, will be joining us on October 15th, the Wednesday after the long weekend. She spent many years in Chelmsford, and then most recently, in Methuen, so we will plan to have her come to a future school committee meeting, but she, we're all very excited. She stopped by a few times already to meet the staff and meet people, and it is continuing the relationship with Wakefield as well. So we're very excited to have her joining us.
Great, thank you. Ms. Kelly?
Yeah, a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Wise. I was going to mention the angst film as well, shown today and tonight and tomorrow at Coolidge. That was actually an idea brought by our behavior coach. So, she had been at a workshop and saw it and thought how powerful it was, and the middle school principals previewed it and felt it was appropriate. So, I think that was exciting. I think the power then, from that film goes to how it's used in advisory and in homerooms and discussions with middle schoolers about how can they manage their stress levels. In addition, our behavior coach today did her first training for Open Circle, which is the social-emotional program that we use here in Reading at the elementary level. If you know anything about it, it's excellent. And up until fairly recently, you had to send everyone to the Wellesley Center for training. They have loosened that up a little bit, and she has become a licensed trainer. So today was her first training in Reading. So that's a huge impact for us. It really means that every new teacher, a lot of times when you roll out programs like that, you train an initial crew, and then it's hard to keep up with it. So today, she trained about 18 people, and I think all of them had been hired in the last couple of years. So that was kind of exciting. It's a, it's a two-day training, so we're excited about that, and kudos to Lawrence Abella for doing those great things, and, and thank you to this board, and I know the, the overall town budget for making that position a community priority, because it really does make a huge impact. The more tools we can give staff to work with students, I think it just, I mean, that risk survey, we, we're just going to see better, better scores in a couple of years, right, Erica? Continue. The other thing is, as you know, the MCAS data was released this week, Monday night at midnight, so we did send out a release of really just kind of nuts and bolts, what our scores look like. I will be doing a much more comprehensive presentation October 17th for this panel, but just so you know, we have had the preliminary scores for- But just so you know, we have had the preliminary scores for a while. Our data coach has been making the rounds and having one-to-ones with all the principals to really unpack the dat- data, look at kind of the strengths, look at the things that could be strengthened. Some of the schools have started to do that during PD days. I know the middle schools had some time this week to start unpacking the scores in, in real deep dives. Couple of things just before October 17th of note. One of the things that came up last year that everyone in Reading was kind of scratching their head was this new category of advanced coursework, and we got zero points for that. And that were, that was attributed to the percent of high school students, 11th and 12th graders, that take a certain courses. Most of them are APs, but some higher-level math. And we were sort of like, wow, we didn't think our numbers were that low, and we didn't get any point. We went to four points, which was the maximum this year. I had thought that it was a statistical situation where our class sizes changed a little bit, so our percentages looked less because there were less students, which is, I think, what happened. So, what was it, the class of 2017 was one of the largest classes we had?
Yeah, and then we had a smaller class right after that.
So, I, I think it was kind of an overcorrection of that. So, that was kind of exciting for us because we knew that, we felt we had a lot, a large number of kids taking upper-level courses. Our growth points are up quite a bit. Our scores are relatively similar to last year. The state has defined a little bit more with accountability. Last year, they just had an overall, like, let's see if I can find it quickly, meeting targets, partially meeting targets, and everyone was sorted in that category. This year, they divided that up to meeting and exceeding, substantial, moderate, and limited, which I think gives us a better gauge of where you are in that huge band. So, we're pretty excited. I think overall, our scores are starting to improve. There's certainly some trends now that we have to look at, at specific grades and at specific schools. I think the work with the data coach over the last number of years has really gotten us used to the language of looking at data. One thing that I just want to point out is that, you know, looking at MCAS data really could be a complete full-time, 40-hour-a-week job. As a school district, we use it as a guiding principle. We are certainly doing our due diligence. This district spends much more time looking at MCAS data than some of the districts I've worked in, but it's not everything we do. So, when we, when we come on October, when I come on October 17th with the PowerPoint, I just want you to be aware that we are really using the data. A lot of the data we use is really at the classroom level, looking at particular questions that, you know, like every fourth grader in Reading got this question wrong, or things like that. Those pieces actually tell us a lot more than just statistical numbers. And we're looking at where our curriculum fits. As you know, we publish pacing guides for our staff this year. So, we're really trying to button up a lot of those internal teacher structures so that one of the things that with any test at the end of the year, it's like, oh, we didn't get to that chapter, and there were four questions on it, right? So, we don't know where, there's always an end-of-the-year unit, right? And we never know what questions are going to be tweaked. Some years, like, I know one year, like, fifth grade had 12 fraction questions, another year they had two. So, you know, it really is, a lot of it has to do with that. Overall, our scores are quite good, substantially prog, making progress in all areas, which is one of the higher categories for Reading. So, kudos. I know some schools had tremendous growth, and that's exciting. I know this community in particular were, was really concerned about Joshua Eaton a number of years ago, and they continually, continuing to make extraordinary success. So, kudos to that team, and Mrs. Zepolito and her crew have done an amazing job. But we have strong scores really throughout, and the schools that we really are going to target for extra support, we're looking at that, too, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to take, take a few minutes to talk about the Student Opportunity Act, which is a bill right now that's being reviewed by, I think, first the Senate and the House. It has a lot of support in both branches, and it's something that actually emerged from the 2015 Foundation Budget Review Commission, and it's now at a point where all of the recommendations from that commission are coming to fruition in this, in this bill. So, this is something that's on the fast track and probably will be, I would assume will be passed before the end of the year or will be tweaked and passed before the end of the year. It really does have that much, much support. It's based on increasing funding over a seven-year period, over the next seven years. There are some highlights to the bill. I'll do it from a Reading perspective. The, the, the act itself is meant to help school districts that serve high percentages of low-income students. So, the communities that have a high percentage of low-income students, which Reading is not in that category, are the ones that are going to receive the largest increase of Chapter 70 funding. However, every community is going to benefit. There will always be what's called a hold harmless amount that's going to be increased in the per, per pupil allocation, which we currently receive. I believe that's going to be $30 a student, is what they're saying. But where we're probably going to see some benefit are in the areas of special education. So, the bill also provides full funding, which is 75% reimbursement of circuit breaker, and, and that, that's going to happen starting in FY '21. It also is going to, and this is new, it is out, it's also going to start reimbursing for special ed transportation, because that currently is not happening with circuit breaker. It will be over a four-year period. So, in FY '21, it will be a 25% reimbursement, and then in '22, it's 50%, '23, 75%, and then in '24, 100%. So, that for Reading will be a big, a big piece of the additional funding that we're going to receive. So, that, that is significant, because as you know, transportation is a, is a big part of the special education budget. We also may see some increases, we will see some increase in foundation rate for guidance and psychological services that support social emotional learning supports. The other thing that maybe down the road will benefit Reading is they are lifting the annual cap on MSBA spending for school building construction, and it's going to be increasing by $150 million a year. So, you know, you have to still qualify, but by raising the cap, it gives, makes you a greater chance of being eligible. There are some things that obviously we will need to report out on as part of our annual, reporting out to the Department of Education. And really what it is, is what we currently do with our district improvement plan. So, it says, "School districts must develop and make publicly available plans for closing opportunity gaps." Ironically, our last three-year district improvement plan, that's what we focused on. So, there would be specific goals and metrics to track success. So, it looks very similar to what we have been doing with our district improvement plan in previous years. They are also going to establish a 21st Century Education Trust Fund that's going to, it, it seems like it's an innovation fund. We don't know a lot of details of what this looks like yet, but it's to pursue creative approaches to student learning and district improvement. So, those are the highlights. We, I, I have left a lot of information in, at your chairs for you to review, including the actual bill, as soon as we, and we have shared this also with the town manager as well. There is a roundtable next Wednesday that Senator Lewis is holding.
Did they move it?
I'm sorry?
Did they move it again?
No, next Wednesday.
October 2nd.
Next Wednesday.
Oh, that's a Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday. At Stoneham Middle School. So, that will be interesting to hear.
What time is that?
Because he's, he's the, the joint chair of the Education Committee. He's, he's one of the chairs. It's at 7:00.
Yes.
Can we notify for that, just in case?
We got emails on it.
No, but can we notify that we're attending, in case we have a quorum?
Post.
You mean post?
Yeah. Post, thank you. Sorry.
We can do that. And as soon as I get more information or our associations get more information, we'll be more than happy to share it.
John, I, just a question. I think you touched on it, but with all of this extra potential money, I'm just thinking in like the spec, the, the transportation, I mean, how, is that going to bring a lot more burden on our reporting to get that money?
Good question.
Great question.
Great question. I'm going to go with yes.
I mean, we, sometimes you spend more money to get the money.
It's, the, the circuit breaker process is laborious.
In and of itself is incredibly labor-intensive with incredibly short timeframes. We do now, we started the year before last year where we actually applied for the extraordinary relief, which basically we have to accelerate all of our filings, but then it makes the end-of-year filing a little bit easier. So, we're continuing with that process. This will be another added step, and I will say, from the Medicaid reimbursement that we also submit for quarterly, in this, they, they, it is becoming progressively more difficult to do the filings, gather the information, and meet some of the thresholds. So, but we will continue to pursue all avenues that we can.
Still worth it, but it's a lot of work.
The circuit breaker is definitely still worth it.
Is, the timing of that in the school year, is that in the spring? The application for that? When you have all this time-intensive pressure, is that in the spring when you're?
The circuit breaker extraordinary relief is early spring, and then, believe it or not, the final filing for the year is typically due, so the year closes on June 30th, the filing is typically due July 2nd or July 3rd.
So, we've started to already.
We're trying to start to build the files now.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're trying to change some of our processes so that as, as the students' IPs are reviewed that may be eligible for circuit breaker, we can do it on more of a rolling basis so that it's not all overwhelming at the end, so.
Capture it real time, yeah.
Still, still a lot, and it is, it, it's not the most automated process by any stretch of the imagination.
Sounds like an opportunity.
Unfortunately, it's at the state level, not us doing it.
This one is actually, I think, from Ms. Kelly. If parents in the community are wondering when they are going to receive their individual child's MCAS scores.
So, they are mailing them to us next week. And we say this every year because people are like, oh, you know, when are we getting them? We stuff them as soon as we get them. It does take a while. There are a lot of them. So, it, it usually takes us a little over a week to get them ready to go out. That, again, it's, it's labor-intensive. So, that's what we're going to do, and, and we'll get them out as soon as we can.
Thank you.
They don't sit around long.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Anything else? One of the things I wanted to mention, committee, one of the committee members mentioned to me that maybe we set up a policy subcommittee because we, you know, we've been looking a lot, and there's a lot of things we've been talking about to, to update and change. So, I'm going to put that on the, probably put that on the, take a look at what the next agenda looks like, but potentially put a discussion on that. I think it sounds like a good idea, maybe.
Would that subcommittee look through the, oh, I guess that's what we'll discuss, is what the role would be?
Yeah.
Rewind, sorry.
I just want to have a discussion.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Couple of things for future agendas or for the next one for old business, I guess is the case maybe. We talked back in July about Arcasa and the letter for FERPA and all that kind of fun stuff and making sure that was executed. I know that's been in process, but just to follow up on that, we talked in July as well about the RMHS handbook and the updates that might be happening to that, so scheduling those updates appropriately going forward, which obviously includes, she's not here to speak for herself necessarily, but scheduling school council-related updates for RMHS itself. There's a school council meeting on October 1st, and it's not on that agenda yet, probably because she has to do the school improvement plan first. But that's one of the things we talked about, so I just wanted to follow up on that and see if we could get that on the calendar as part of our follow-ups. Somewhat aligned to that would be getting the actual school improvement plans on the calendar for review. As state law says, we're supposed to have some sort of input to it. And then also, since we probably are going to start going through the process, and I've seen the requests come in for kindergarten signups, we might want to talk about a kindergarten placement policy adjustment or policy creation or something else along those lines so that we don't have challenges for a third year in a row, if at all possible. It's easier said than done.
So, the difficult part of that are the letters are ready to go out.
For signups, not for placements.
No, but in there, it describes.
How we do it.
How we do it. And I actually just looked into this the other day and actually asked Mrs. Barowski, and there is nothing in the minutes that said that the school committee wanted us to change the policy for this year.
That's true, because I 100% agree with that.
So, no, for, for next year, I'm talking.
Technically, there is no policy, so we could not.
No, there is, there is a policy.
There's a guideline. There's not a policy, right? That was part of the conversation back in February, is there's guidelines. You have these three or four placement guidelines, but there is not a policy as it stands right now around that.
There's an attend, there's a, there is a, a policy that we've been following.
Is that the attendance?
Yeah.
There's, yeah, there, okay. I guess, I guess I'm differentiating between the four or five, I'm going to go to my local school, I'm going to go to.
Yes.
Right, that's a, that's a guideline versus, that's not written in any policy anywhere.
Correct, correct.
Right, that's what I'm referring to.
But that, right, but that's, the feedback I received, and I can't remember now if it was February, I think it was February 8th, was that we were going to continue with those guidelines for this upcoming year. And the reason why I'm saying that is because the letters are ready to go out, and we would not be able to wait for two more meetings because the kindergarten meeting is November 6th.
Okay. I, I don't have an objection to the guidelines as they're written. I just wanted to make sure that we had that conversation appropriately. Maybe, maybe next week, I mean, they're going out already, so we can't, you know, don't stop the bus, right? But we should just maybe review it on October 16th real quick and just say, yep, these are still what they are. It is what it is, right, for the time being, and then have the conversation about whatever else we want to do, so that next time he comes to this, he doesn't have these problems of, are we going to do something or are we not going to do something? And maybe I'm just, I'm just one, so there's four other opinions here, so.
Yes.
I'm a little bit concerned about doing it next meeting, because if the letters are going out that articulate, here's our process and here's what happens, and then we as a committee a week later or the week earlier are having a discussion about possibly some future changes, I think as a parent that sends kind of mixed messages. So, I don't know that next, I don't know that this month is the right time. If we wanted to make changes, it wouldn't be for next year, because the letters don't stop the bus, as you said. We'd want to make it for the following year, and I think maybe that timeframe would be more like, I'd have to think about it.
March.
March, right. I'm a little bit nervous about just creating confusion in the community about they're talking, they're talking about guidelines, but I just got a letter, and it could be confusing. So, I would actually propose putting it off a little bit.
For 2021, got it.
Ultimately, you guys control the calendar, just ideas to put on the calendar, right?
Yep.
Anything else?
Just a follow-up on the brochure. That's already on there, right?
Yeah.
That would be under old business.
Very old business. Would you move to a chair?
Is there some?
Is there a second?
Sorry, yeah. Yes, John.
At, at some point in the near future, I'd also like to get an update on athletic start times, as far as practice times, as to the commitments that were made and made with Mr. Zaya saying that practices would be done by six versus what's going on in today's actual, with late start and everything else.
So, if I can not comment on the answer, but in November, Ms. Boynton is coming and Ms. Williams to do a high school slash guidance presentation, and I've already asked her to do an update on late start, and we can include the athletic piece at that.
Perfect.
Meeting.
That good?
Yep, that's perfect.
Move to a chair?
Is there a second?
All those in favor?
Five, zero.
Thank you.